Record, it is Tuesday, January 23rd. It's a few minutes after six. We'll start with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilor Milam?
Here.
Councilor Burnt?
Here.
Councilor Little Roberts?
Here.
Councilor Kavanagh?
Here.
Councilor Borton?
Here.
Mayor DeVere?
Here.
And Councilor Palmer is absent.
Item number two is our Pledge of Allegiance. If you will all rise and join us in the pledge to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is our Community Invocation. Tonight will be led by Pastor Tim Pucey with the Valley Shepherd Church of the Nazarene. If you will all join us in the Community Invocation or take this as an opportunity for a moment of reflection. Thank you for joining us.
Let's pray. Father, first of all, tonight, we want to thank you for the many ways in which you've blessed our community in so many, many ways. And it's so easy for us to take it for granted. So we thank you. And we thank you this evening for our mayor and our council members and for the many who served this community in so many different capacities. Tonight, as the council meets and deals with important issues relating to our community of Meridian, Lord, we pray you'd give them wisdom and guidance and help all who participate in this meeting this evening to listen well to the perspective of others and help our council to make good judgment calls in behalf of all the citizens of Meridian. Lord, for those who came to this meeting tonight, tired and weary from heavy loads in their personal lives, I ask, Lord, that you'd help them find rest and peace even now as they look to you. Lord, help us always to be mindful of the needs of those around us and give us wisdom to know how to best respond to those needs. We ask for your continued blessing upon our community and all the people who call this home. May we truly be a blessing to one another as we live and work and interact together. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item four is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
We have an amendment to make on item 11A. The ordinance should read Ordinance Number 18-1762. And I need to read the entirety of this. An ordinance amending Meridian City Code is codified at Title 11 entitled "The Unifying Development Code." Of the Meridian City Code pertaining to definitions, allowed uses in all districts, specific use standards, home occupation and retail store, wine and beer sales and servings, surety agreements, and establish new definitions and regulations to allow the operation of food and beverage products processing minor in the commercial, industrial, and traditional neighborhood zoning districts and providing for a waiver of the reading rules and providing an effective date is the title of 11A. So with that amendment, I would move that we adopt the amended agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second and a well-done reading of that ordinance. Thank you, Mr. Borton. All those in favor of the adoption of this agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Item five, Mr. Clerk.
Madam Mayor, we did have one sign up this evening. Eileen Dudinak with a description of recycling glass. Would like to address the council this evening.
Hi.
Hi. Please come forward.
So am I Eileen Dudinak?
If you can wait, please start by saying your name and address.
Eileen Dudinak, a new vintage wine shop in Meridian at the corner of Fairview and Eagle. We've been open almost seventeen years. And out of those seventeen years, probably sixteen of those, I have recycled bottles in the city of Boise, which I just found out is illegal. So anyway, so what I propose to you guys is we need to find some way to recycle bottles. I fully understand it's very expensive to do this. But if we could come up with a plan some way, somehow, because just my little shop, as I serve by the glass, in two weeks, three weeks, I had forty cases of empty bottles. So forty cases times twelve. And that's just me, my tiny little shop. So take all of the restaurants, all of the bars that serve beer, wine, and liquor. Take all of those bottles. I'm sure we could fill City Hall many times over. So if there's one way, some way, we could figure it out, that would be awesome. If, I mean, if there's a big giant bin where we could put them, put the bottles, the empties, that would be great. I can do whatever you would want me to do as long as it's not during eleven to eight, Tuesday through Saturday, because I have to work. So that's my proposal. I don't know if that's much of a proposal. But we need to figure something out because as our city grows of Meridian, and I've lived in Meridian for almost twenty-eight years. So as our city grows and as you've seen the growth and all of the press that we get for this awesome little city of ours, with all the new people moving in, all the new restaurants moving in, the village, everywhere, we need to do something for my child, for our grandchildren, not just me, but for all of you as well. So.
Irene, thank you for joining us tonight. And your timing was impeccable. We have the Chair of our Solid Waste Advisory Commission to give their annual report. And we're also doing the town hall tomorrow about recycling.
That's at Cole Church, Cole Community?
Yes, at Cole Valley.
Mm-hmm. Cole Valley.
We, I just talked with the Chair about possibly forming a subcommittee. So we will be calling you.
Perfect. Eight-five-five-ninety-two-thirty.
Thank you, Eileen.
Thank you for taking time to listen to me. Appreciate it.
Ms. Little Roberts.
If I may ask a question, why no longer Boise?
Um, because Boise's funny like that. They called, they've, somebody in this whole valley, so one of the distributors, Hayden Beverage, puts stickers on the outside of their boxes to stage the morning deliveries in the trucks. So some way, somebody, I don't know who it was, received a box that had a new vintage wine shop sticker on the side of it. And a person was doing the right thing and recycling bottles and took it to the fire station at McMillan in Boise. And I received a phone call from the city clerk's office, Peter at the city clerk's office, telling me that under no circumstance am I to cross city lines to recycle bottles. And I said, okay, let me check with my husband. I'll see if he was the one that did that because normally we recycle at Emerald, at Republic. Because right out there in their area where they, where the workers park their cars, they have recycle bins for glass bottles. So I said, okay, I'll check with him. I'm sorry that we did that. So I checked with Harry and he said, no, we took them to Emerald. So I called back that next morning and I said, Peter, you owe me an apology because you wrongfully accused me of something we did not do. And he said, well, you were forthcoming last night. And I said, that's before I knew where we for sure took the bottles. He said, well, still, under no circumstance will you cross city lines to the city of Boise to recycle bottles. And I said, okay, I want to talk to the mayor's office. And he said, you do that. So I called the mayor's office. As you could see, I don't stop. So I called the mayor's office. They called me back. Mayor Beeter's office called me back. And he informed me that it was against the law to, for me to cross the city of Boise lines to recycle bottles. And I said, wow, that seems pretty heavy for something like this. And he said, it is. It's against the law for you to cross city lines to recycle your wine bottles. So I didn't think of asking for the code. Why would I think of asking for that? I don't know that. So he just said, yep, under no circumstances. So I said, all right, have a nice day.
It's probably because it costs the city of Boise's residents to recycle glass. And it is that cost impact that makes it probably exclusive to their residents.
Correct. But he, I think he could have told me that.
He could have.
So.
Probably would have been a better delivery, but.
Yeah. Who knows? So that's why, so that's why I'm here, asking for help for our grandchildren and their grandchildren.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Volunteering to head up the committee.
No problem. Thanks, Eileen.
Okay, any one further? Okay. Item six is our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
I would move that we approve the consent agenda as published and for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilor Milam?
Aye.
Councilor Burnt?
Aye.
Councilor Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilor Kavanagh?
Aye.
Councilor Borton?
Aye.
There were no items moved from the consent agenda. We'll move to item 8A, which is our annual update from our Parks Commission Chair, Joe Greer. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Do you need to state my name and address?
If you'll just state your name for the record.
My name is Joe Greer. I am currently the President of the Parks and Rec Commission. And I am here to present our commission report for 2017. Actually, kind of go over it. I'm sure that you guys have reviewed it. Typically, when I see something like this on my agenda, I'm not super excited. They're not super exciting. However, our commission is exciting because I'm on it. The all-commission goals and accomplishments is what I'll start with. But I do want to make note that throughout the last year as we went through commission goals and accomplishments and then we had the committees, we did realize towards the end of the year that the committees perhaps had run their course. We had a lot of committees in place for the pathways and marketing signage, a few different things. And as these have been accomplished, then as we're meeting in these committee meetings for fifteen minutes, we're trying to find information to pull together. So instead, we have collaborated the all-commission goals and accomplishments with the committee goals and accomplishments. So we're kind of addressing them all as an entire commission. And then if we do need to break out for specific committees, we can do that on an as-needed basis because I think that a lot of the information now, as we've had some really great accomplishments, this will help us to be productive and to also keep our meetings not running over the time limit. I'm kind of a time Nazi. See if you guys have a minute for that. So with that, the first commission goal was going through the pathway connection. We were trying to develop a connected pathway system across the city of Meridian with the Five Mile Creek Pathway as the top priority, which you, of course, in your notes, have all of the pathway segments that have been connected. With that, last year, we also came up with the finalization and the distribution of the Z-cards. A little full debt maps that you guys received. I think those were part of the pathway tour. Those show the connections. They also show future connections. And the Z-cards were kind of a huge accomplishment for the marketing committees. That was something that we had accomplished. I'll pad them back there. Moving on through that, we also were talking about the options to obtain, build, or develop partnerships for additional park space and/or amenities. We have two projects with MYAC where we had the Tully Park Outdoor Gym that was opened in 2016. Well, that's when we had the ribbon cutting. We also, right now, are working on the Memorial Plaza in Kleiner Park. So that's underway. And we're going over some information and they presented. And we're kind of going back and forth with Parks and Rec staff. Then we, of course, have the design development of the future South Meridian Park. So that's still in the process. We are working with other agencies, task force, commissions, so on and so forth, to try to help with not only our own pathways, but maybe a master plan and trail system. We do have that on a future agenda for the commission meeting. We also had, so of course, Shelley Houston is one of our key players in a lot of the marketing information. And she helps to also generate a list of activities that are coming up because one of our all-committee goals is to have a better community presence so that we have commissioners present in all of the activities, you know, as far as ribbon cuttings. I don't know, movie night is something that I went to. Anything that we can show up and have a presence in the community, just showing that we support what we're doing. So Shelley helped put together this PowerPoint presentation that goes through what the city of Meridian has to offer. This is something that was played for us and we reviewed and approved to send on. And so that was something that was a commission goal. We also have been trying to develop partnerships with the Meridian Fire Department for future stations to be collaborated with the parks. So while we had one that we were kind of working on with Bear Creek, it sounds like that one maybe was set to the side, but we are looking for future parks where we can have fire stations in collaboration with the Parks and Rec staff so that we, I believe we were going to have a dual building there where we had a space that people could use in the evening. So it was a fire station slash community center. And we saw the plans, but that was as far as that went. So maybe that's not really a goal. And the next is to continue, no, I already went over that. There's a whole list of things that we did show up for. So you guys have that on page four of ten. And then we had the master plan. Of course, we have Steve Sidaway. He's an amazing director and helps us through all of this. So most of the items that we go through, of course, are just recommendations. So we just recommend where the brains behind the brains. Another item we had was the exploration to build a pathway along Lucas Grove to Chindon, connecting Eagles Pathways. So that kind of is in collaboration with dealing with the other agencies. And that is something that we will be discussing with them later this year. The memorial plan, the Memorial Plaza did bring up some issues as far as concept plans, but also that went into some of the fee structure. So that's something that came to us this year. Actually, it was last December that we'll be re-reviewing this year to make sure that people are able to afford to have a memorial if they'd like to. They were kind of sliding scale. Other noteworthy accomplishments, we did have the Keithburg Legacy Park ribbon cutting, the Rita Husky Park. Those were both successful and large events. And a lot of work went into that process throughout last year, which we had workshops to name the parks. We also have Hillsdale Park, the kickoff for the construction of that. We did have a commission team building activity where we all learned how to play disc golf. I don't know if we really learned how to play disc golf. I'm not very good at that. That's what I did realize. I'd rather just golf. I like to swing a club instead. And then we had the facilities tour where we went and followed the existing and future sites for Kleiner Park, Hillsdale, Bear Creek, Meridian Home Court, Rita Husky, and Keithburg Legacy Park. So a lot of these items are already in place. The rest of the information goes through all commission goals. And because these are kind of in collaboration with what are, we have the committee with all commission kind of pulling those all together. I think they kind of are redundant. So I don't really want to go through everyone line by line. I'm sure you guys are sad about that. Seeing if there's anything I missed, just to make sure. We also, as far as that community presence, we have seen an increase in commissioners being more involved in some of the outside committees. And I, myself, I like to be involved in the Christmas activities, of course. We do have a couple of other commissioners that got involved as well. But some people have passions for other things. And so it's just nice to see that, you know, they're spreading, they're volunteering out beyond the commission. So. I guess I have any questions? Just so excited. I thought about doing, you know, like a figurative dance, but that might be a little weird.
Yeah.
If that is a recreation program, I think you should.
I know about it.
Joe, I know that Mike came and talked to the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council about the Memorial Park or Plaza. And they did ask about the cost of pavers. And if the group that's working on looking, looking at the costs, if there could be consideration of maybe an excess, in excess of the minimum amount that someone could donate to help offset, maybe someone who wants to do a memorial but can't afford one. That's the question they raised. So someone that can't afford the $250 for a paver, is there some kind of assistance program or something they can do in lieu of actually a cost, a cash donation?
I'll bring that up. That's actually a pretty good point. And that was, you know, we had the tree memorials over at Tully Park, which you can't do that anymore, but it was really inexpensive. And then when we started to talk about these memorials, the pricing was going up. But it was going to be trees again. And so the costs that came back were pretty high. So then, after I had kittens over it, they came back with different numbers. But then this was a different idea, concept altogether. And so we really are being conscious of the pricing.
And just something to add to your discussion.
Yes, absolutely.
And thank you for the leadership you showed in the Winter Lights Parade. That was magical. And so I needed to give you kudos as you were standing right in front of us. So council, any questions for Joe?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
No questions, but just kudos. I remember I was the guy that recruited you to get to be on the Christmas program.
You were the guy.
Yeah, I remember that was wild. Yeah, so truly blessed for the opportunity to be your liaison for your commission. I have deep roots that go real deep in that commission. I spent a lot of years there. So you do a fantastic job. It's a lot of time and, but well worth it. So just wanted to say thank you. And you're doing such a fantastic job with all of the time that you spend and everything that you do for the betterment of our city. So thank you.
Thank you, Trigg. And you were the one that stuck me on all this and that got me on the Christmas in the Meridian Committee. But thank you. I appreciate that. I enjoy it.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavanagh.
Couple of, just quick questions for you, Joe. Thanks for the report. You can do a great job kind of saying, this is everything the Parks Commission's doing. And I appreciate hearing from you once a year about everything that you're doing for our community. Are there ways that the commission would like to see greater or different support from the council moving forward? Do you feel that you have good direction, support, things that we could do to better encourage the things that you're doing for our community?
I feel like we have a pretty good system. Having a liaison is helpful so that if we do have questions, we have somebody right there at the meeting that we can ask. It's usually either Trigg or Emily, right? So I'm always asking Emily if I'm saying the right thing. But other than that, I don't, I don't see anything that really needs to change. But I definitely will keep that in mind. Sounds like you want something else to do.
No.
Okay, just making sure.
I want to make sure. Madam Mayor, additional question? Can you talk to us, when Mike was here a couple of weeks ago, he gave us kind of an update on the South Meridian Park. And he touched on some of the names. And I think at least some of us were surprised to see kind of a shift from the name Discovery to some of the other names proposed. I just thought it would be good, since you're here, to maybe give council kind of an update on the deliberation that went behind that.
As far as the Exploration Park is like?
Or just the names in general? And maybe why the shift from Discovery onto some of the other proposed names?
So I do know that Discovery Park is a park also located in Boise, I understand. So there was a redundancy there. So then we went through a brainstorming exercise where people were kind of just throwing out names that we liked. And then they, I think we came down to maybe five or six where someone took the names and came back with artwork associated with them. And then based on those names, we kind of came up with three that we liked. And then it came down to the Exploration. I want to say, you know, Innovation was one of them. And I think Explorer maybe was one of them. And so, well, it was Explorer. And then we went to Exploration because it was kind of a play on the word instead of just being Explorer. So, and some of the artwork that went with it kind of helped because that park is kind of about discovery, right? So you're out doing Exploration. But it was easily a three or four-step process, just kind of going through the different names. And some of the artwork maybe made some of the names not look as appealing. So, and now we have some artwork that's supposed to be coming in for some of the lighting. So because they, like how we had for Keithburg Legacy Park, where they make the, I guess, the standout feature, the artwork for each park, they're supposed to be presenting three different types of setups, which it might be a backlit, it's only maybe backlit, kind of like tubes with lights in them. But we're, but then we're talking about if we have lights, if they're going to be solar because then we have to worry about turning them on and off and if that's going to be an issue for upkeep. But that is supposed to be on one of our agenda items. But the artist needs to come to the meeting to do that. And maybe, I actually have the agenda. No. Oh, she is set to be at our next meeting. So that's the graphics follow-up. So her name is Stephanie Anman. And she works with Mike Barton. So hopefully by the next time, well, I'll see you guys next year or somebody else will. But hopefully, these will be passed on to you guys during the next couple of months so you guys can see what those look like. Anything else?
Any further comments, questions? Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Okay, item 8B is under SWAC, Solid Waste Advisory Committee. Thank you, Steve, for joining us.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Steve Corey. I'm the chairman of the Solid Waste Advisory Commission. And I come here on their behalf to go ahead and present to you our report on our 2017 activities. Okay, really, trash is part of my discussion. I have to admit that that's going to be in this. But kudos to Scott, Steve Moore, who puts out the In the Bleachers comic strip that is in The Statesman. This was published back on October 4th. This is the commission. And I want to thank you as the council because we've had continuous membership. It's been very strong, having the depth of experience as the subject gets more and more complex. And I want to recognize Mark Nelson, one of the commissioners who's here. Definitely, all of the commissioners commit a great deal of time of their own volunteering. And we really appreciate what they do.
Thanks for being here, Mark.
I will start off by doing a review of the Community Recycling Fund. We started with $12,000, a little over $12,400. And over the course of 2017, We started with 12,000, a little over $12,400, and over the course of 2017, uh, we received, um, payments for recycled materials totaling over $32,000. Uh, we had only one distribution from that, $500 to support the Recycle a Bicycle project. And so at the end of the calendar year, we had a balance of just over $44,000. In 20, well, coming up in 2018, we have three projects which you've given us approval to pursue. Uh, the Catalupa-shaped leaf bench to be put into Meridian's South Regional Park, and trash receptacles for the South Regional Park, and then a mini mobile library for the Hillsdale School area. Uh, the combination of those projects is, uh, just under $27,500, so the recycling fund right now has a balance of just under $16,700. Now, most of the inflow to this account came in late summer, and we have had a real fallout in the market, and I don't know, I can't project if there'll be any flow into that account in the near future, but, um, this is, uh, an accounting of where we're going to be up through this year. One of the big projects that we had during this year was the Recycle a Bicycle project, which was, um, put, uh, brought out in Parks and Recs Unplug and Be Outdoors event this spring. Uh, 41 bicycles destined for the landfill were, um, repaired and provided to the citizens of Meridian. We are indebted and thankful to Republic Services and particularly Rochelle Klein for making this a possibility. And it was a very fun event, and we hope to be able to, uh, build off of that activity.
And Steve, before you move off of that, um, I know in talking to, to both, um, council member Mylum and Rochelle, one of the things that was a surprise out of that program was we thought we would be giving bikes to kids, and we were giving bikes to adults, that this would be their primary mode of transportation. And so, you know, that, that was, that was an interesting lesson learned from it. I, I do know that maybe part of the discussion has been that maybe we can include our community in that as we look at recycling bikes. Um, Republic has had to take some of those bikes to Canyon County because they couldn't find recipients here in, in this area. So as we look at recycling bikes, how we can get those to, um, people that have the need for them, um, right here in our community. And so maybe that's a public education program or, or something of that sort, but how we can keep those bikes here at home.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. That's, uh, good direction that we want to go ahead and try to follow through on. I know there's a number of, uh, entities here in the city that really help out the citizens, and they see the need. And somehow if we can facilitate getting that need communicated back to Rochelle and Republic, and, and so that the bikes can meet up with the need, um, that's definitely something that we want to make happen.
Very much so. So thank you for that.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Should we wait till the end for questions? But, uh, are, are you planning on doing this again this year, Steve?
I, I, I think yes. Uh, exactly how it would be, uh, rolled out this year, I'm not sure, but, um, but I know that, that there is quite a stream of bikes, and, uh, basically if we can figure out how to go ahead and get them cleaned up and renewed, um, I also believe there's a pretty significant need. So, um, the commission will be figuring out what event and how to go ahead and all the logistics.
Thank you. Love that.
Another event that we, uh, rolled out this year, uh, was Trash or Treasure. And, um, this was a very successful project, which facilitated many items, um, to remain useful and stay out of the landfill. And we definitely, as a commission, look forward to holding this a second time. This set of slides that Brett Beranko went ahead and collected of one particular place with, uh, items on the curb that, um, dropped down to two items, and then he found one of the items, moved over into a neighbor's garage, and finally the exercise bike went. But actually seeing these things come back into the community for reuse, uh, was heartwarming. And, uh, we definitely, um, appreciate Brett Beranko of the Meridian Police Department for his initiative and his leadership and his efforts to make this a success. We continued on with our project, uh, of the Hand in Hand We Recycle. This, uh, bin was actually placed out at Republic Services' facility over on Franklin, and it's continued to be a great location for our multifamily units, uh, where the residents of those multifamily have a place to come with their recyclable materials and get them into the stream to be able to contribute to the Community Recycling Fund. And, uh, we continue to, uh, do our annual activity at the Public Works Expo, uh, providing information and education materials for any of the public that attends. I want to single out and thank Commissioner Meg Larson for leading this activity this year, and, uh, point out Conrad, Conrad McDonald of the Republic Services for his excellent recycling demonstration, which we're going to take advantage of tomorrow night at the Town Hall Meeting. So look forward to that. It's very engaging. One of the field trips that we, uh, did as a commission was to go out to Boise's composting facility to keep abreast of, uh, the possibilities that it could bring out. And, um, that rolled out quite well for the city of Boise. They had set aside a certain amount of land out at their 20 Mile Farm property, and they needed every single square foot of it to go ahead and, um, receive the grass and, and leaf and such that they picked up from their pro, their, uh, city. And, um, in fact, had to move into Phase Two and kind of clear some of that ground for the product before they could go ahead and get it distributed to their citizens. And so, uh, this does look like it's a good project, something that, uh, in the future we may be able to, uh, make available to our citizens somehow. Uh, but Boise's indicating that that's about 18 to 24 months off before they may actually get the footprint for the facility built large enough to be able to take, um, materials from around the Treasure Valley. But they do have a desire for it to be a regional facility. And, um, of course, Meridian has had its presence on the Solid Waste Advisory Committee for Ada County, and there has been quite a bit of opening of the communication pathways on how the landfill's operating and how finances are, are done with the county, and there's been quite a good exchange of information. We certainly hope to push that a little bit harder to go ahead and get a, uh, region-wide cooperation that, uh, we need to have, so, because we're in one media area, and so any discussion in the paper or in the, uh, on the radio or on television reaches everyone in the valley. And in reality, there really is only one message that goes across, but sometimes people want to tailor it to their own personal needs, and that has been quite a bit of problem over the last month. But, uh, we hope to, uh, bring that back, uh, into a single stream. Um, one of the other activities of our commission was the annual rate adjustment, and of course, um, most of the, uh, rate adjustment that we had to, uh, review was just the contractual annual, uh, consumer price index increase. And then there, there was only one commercial charge that was added to the list of services, and we hope that we gave you the information you needed, uh, for your consideration. But it was a fairly straightforward exercise this year, so. I want to go ahead and, uh, touch base on the Ada County Hazardous Waste Meetings. Uh, that is the group that coordinates and, uh, and directs the collection of hazardous waste, which for Meridian happens out at the, uh, Republic Services Facility on Franklin. And, uh, these quarterly meetings, Mark Nelson is our representative on that, uh, commission, and, uh, again, there's definitely a good flow of information between the cities on this activity. Uh, it's certainly a service that our, uh, constituents have told us that they really appreciate. Uh, we also did a number of, uh, reviews of some code violation service improvements and, uh, various other activities in our, our charter. We participated in a court-mediated settlement involving a contractor operating in violation of city code. We updated the rate comparison chart, which, uh, we can use to go ahead and communicate to our citizens, uh, the value they're getting for what they pay for in comparison to the other cities in Treasure Valley. And, uh, maintained the curbside services chart that identifies what's available to our citizens as a ready communication tool, and, um, reviewed the standards related to lid placement on container locate, and container location on collection days, uh, based on some suggestions from the citizens, and, uh, concluded that there was no need for any action at this time, but at least, uh, we recognize the, the citizens' interest and concern. We received numerous presentations throughout the year. Republic Services did their quarterly and annual reports on, uh, uh, collection services, donated services, household hazardous waste, and, uh, secondary market conditions for recycled materials. They gave us a specific presentation on the experience that they developed, um, during Snowmageddon last year, and, um, being able to continue to provide responsive, uh, collection services in the wake of that, uh, challenge. As mentioned, we had presentations on, uh, Boise Compost Program and on China's, uh, changing market on, uh, green sword and national sword and its effect on recycling. Oops. And we went ahead and had presentations on grass recycling and glass recycling, on the status of those activities in the valley and whether they were growing, uh, unfortunately. There was no particular opportunities with glass at this moment, but certainly if we've got some help, we might be able to bring some opportunities into this valley. Uh, grass services, the subscription process is still, um, holding steady, and, um, certainly, maybe that'll become more of interest if the composting program is, uh, available to our citizens. And so on, and I will close with our upcoming business. Of course, we have to continue to study what's happening with the recycling market and study the, and I, we still have not had a chance to loop back on the, uh, city survey from about a year ago. There are a couple of questions in there that dealt with recycling and, and garbage collection and, uh, in general. Uh, Meridian fared much better than the region and the, um, country, but there's still more information in there that we might be able to use for our, uh, planning purposes. We'll continue to promote, uh, Trash or Treasure, uh, Hand in Hand and Recycle a Bicycle programs, and, uh, expand our, continue to expand our education outreach to decrease contamination in the residential recycling stream. That's something that's needing some high attention at this point. Continue to go ahead and monitor glass recycling and yard waste management, and, uh, participate in the Ada County Solid, uh, Solid Waste Advisory Committee as well as the Ada County Hazardous, Household Hazardous Waste Programs. And with that, uh, I, again, want to thank you for the support that you give the commission. We feel like we are truly supported by you, and I stand for questions.
Thank you, Steve. Yeah, I know that, um, in working with Republic on the plastics change and, and that sort of thing, we did share a video that, uh, we asked Republic if, it, it was a video that we got from the city of Provo on the trash can-can. It was, uh, a really informative way and fun way of really sharing better information about what is recyclable, how do you present your trash on trash day, and, um, some of the do's and don'ts. And, uh, it looks like we'll be continuing to maybe work on something jointly to, to help up the education on recycling and what is recycling, what isn't, why it, it isn't, and, um, that's going to be a good dialogue to have with the community. Any questions from council?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Um, first, I have a question about the, the compost in Boise. So part of their program was to then allow residents who participate in the program to come out and, and pick up some compost to, for their personal use after it was finished making. Do you know, do you have any idea how much, have you heard back how much, um, actually went out back to the residents of Boise? How that, successful that was, and that, from that aspect of it?
I would, I would, uh, communicate their plan, and their plan was that roughly a third would be returned back to the citizens that they could pick up for free, and about a third of it would be used by the city of Boise for its parks and, uh, open spaces. And about a third of it, they were hoping to eventually be able to sell through ZAMZOS or some of the other local, uh, entities to go ahead and underwrite the costs. With that, I think the, uh, the composting was picked up very fast. I, I saw the notes that within seven to 10 days, they were out, and so, um, I'm not sure whether that, they'll change their plans at this point.
That's great. Thank you. I didn't mean to put you on the spot on that one. I, I just, I was wondering that, and, well, here you are, so. Um, anyway, you guys are really busy, and I know a lot of work has gone into each one of these projects, and now with this, um, recycling cluster, I have my own words for it, but. I, I just, I know you've been having a lot of extra meetings and really busy, and just thank you for everything that you do, and to all of the commissioners for all the time that they put in and, and the amazing programs and services that you're helping bring to Meridian.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Steve, a cou- couple of things. One, I love this Trash or Treasure program, and, and I hope that it continues to grow. And I guess, just being as one council member, if there's things you need to hear or see from council to help support that program, I hope you'll come let us know. Uh, related to Recycle a Bicycle, when you get that date figured out, if, if you could work with the mayor's office, we can get that date in our calendar. If you need volunteers and help, um, again, that's another program that I, again, myself would love to help support and, and continue to make a success. Steve, talk to me a little bit about how many other municipalities have, have a SWAC or a similar type program, and what type of collaboration is existing between the municipalities on some of these shared issues?
I am, I am not familiar with anyone else in the Treasure Valley that has a citizen commission to help do work with the city. I think that's a, kudos to Meridian for doing that. Boise has a citizen commission that oversees the activities of their environmental department. So it's a different function, different charter oversight and such versus ours, which is, really, you've given us a great deal of latitude to go ahead and try to institute programs in the city. Probably a lot of that has to do with the fact that Boise has 200,000 people, uh, Meridian's now at 100,000 people. We're in that area. None of the other communities within. None of the other communities within Treasure Valley have reached that level yet. Now is getting close, maybe they might follow our model. I'm certainly not gonna, I don't know if I have the time to go ahead and champion it, but if they called me, I'd be more than happy to advise them to do it.
Steve, kind of getting back to my previous question, it seems to me that a lot of our fellow municipalities are kind of headed down the same road together with some of questions, concerns, maybe program improvement, program evolution. Give us as council some insight of maybe some things that we need to be doing so that we can better collaborate because I guess, right or wrong, I believe if we're working better with our sister municipalities that there might be better opportunities to address some of these larger concerns that are going to be, we're going to be facing over the next few months and years.
Councilman Kavner, and I, I'm sorry, I forgot to address the second half of your previous question, which this question actually works out very well on it. On the county solid waste advisory committee, there are representatives, active representatives from Garden City and from Eagle and we are very much in sync with the goals and aspirations and abilities and what, how we deal with our citizens with those communities. Kuna and Star are invited but have not provided a name at this point and we do reach out to try to communicate with them regardless about the activities that are going on, but the reality is, is that we're a great little treasure out here, you know, halfway between Spokane, Portland, Seattle and Salt Lake and there's not a lot in between us and those larger places and the Treasure Valley, like it or not, is one media basket and a bunch of citizens that have pretty common desires and goals and things that they want done and it's very easy to communicate with other people. They do have a kind of a commonness in where we want to go and I think the solid waste advisory committee that we forced, it really was something that Meridian indicated needed to be put together, has been a great addition to go ahead and facilitate communication within Ada County and especially if it can continue to be a volunteer activity, it'll be very valuable throughout Treasure Valley if we could figure out how to add that on.
All right. Thanks, Steve.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Steve, do you have any, any response to Eileen's glass question? I know this doesn't have anything to do with your annual report, but do you have anything just add there that you can, so I know this is something that we've discussed in commission several times.
Well, I think the only point of that is just the current state of the market and that is that because of the fact that it's cheaper to take sand and make new glass than it is to go ahead and recycle glass, which is an unfortunate situation, but happens to be the case, that there aren't any plants that are geared for taking glass and remaking it, reforming it. The only entity that exists is a little entity in Boise that crushes glass into something that competes with sand for sand blasting and they're doing a fine job with that. There are certain reasons why using ground up glass is a much better option than using sand, but unfortunately, it's a very small market and so they're swamped with what they get. You can see the mountain of glass that they've got from the interstate when you drive out towards Micron and I look at it rather regularly and it, I think actually even grows. I think they're not even able to handle the glass that they're receiving at this point. So that was a long way to get to the point that I have been toying with the idea of putting the information together. This is probably more of a county deal, but recommending that the county collate the information on the plastics that we produce, the cardboard, the glass that could be put together and making a presentation to the State Department of Commerce so that when they're out and about, outside of the state, talking with entities, that maybe they can recruit some firm that would know they had a very stable, good feedstock here and try to lure some companies in here that could use this material. Certainly in all these cases, if we could make new products here in the valley, it's better than trucking this material to Seattle or Portland and having somebody else make those materials and enjoy the jobs that come with that. But yeah, the numbers that we've got as far as the size of the feed stream, they're really valley wide, so I think what I'll try to do is push the county to go ahead and work with the state and make that presentation.
Madam Mayor, follow up.
Ms. Mylum.
Thank you, Steve. I really appreciate that information. Although, and I realize that, you know, glass does disintegrate over time and which is why it hasn't been a top priority, but if somebody could reuse it somewhere, I think it just, I guess it might be worth the exploration of, you know, figuring out how much would it cost to truck it to Seattle or to do something, because it feels, it just feels so horrible putting it in the landfill. There's got to be something else, whether that's partnering, partnering with the county or, you know, other cities and, you know, if we can't get a company to come here to use it, we just have to find some solution. So I'll work with you guys on that as well.
Totally agree.
Which is kind of the basis behind the conversation we had before this meeting on a subcommittee, whether it's looking at plastics three through seven or the glass, if there are users out there that we should know about. I think during the recession, we identified a user for some of the scrap lumber where Republic started using some of that and partnering with the local Meridian business and there's, there's just very limited opportunities, but if we have a group of passionate individuals, there's never a doubt that there's great ideas that come from it and they'll look under every rock and crevice to see if there's something that we haven't considered. So excited about that opportunity.
Thank you, Steve.
Kind of the same outcome that we had in the police department when we were talking about dogs and, and we created an amazing program that for many years served this community until it just got too big. So, and that was because we had very passionate citizens that came together and said, we want to be the solution. Well, thank you, Steve. Appreciate it and just on the recycle a bike, get the discussion back to my office, but also in working with Republic because I understand that there is a cost to that. We used to have a gentleman that recycled all the bikes and we turned those to many of the kids and the Boys and Girls Club, but then he went on a mission and we lost that, that passionate individual and so there's a cost. Identify those costs and maybe it's a great program to be a recipient of the grant from the recycle fan, fund to.
Indeed, thank you and see you tomorrow night at the town hall meeting also.
Yes, thank you. We appreciate your time and thank you, Mark, for joining us. Always good to have support. Okay, we'll move right into action items. Item nine A is a public hearing on VARH 2017 dash zero one six nine. I will open the public hearing with staff comments.
Madam Mayor, members of council.
Thank you.
I apologize at the top of this, this is Paramount Subdivision number 29, that is not what we are talking about. This is a pond subdivision. If you recall, it's about a month ago, there was a preliminary plat approved for this property. As you can see on the north, this property is a, is a care facility, there was an existing home and then the subdivision kind of wraps around the home. Moving on to the next slide here, just to give you a little bit background, the original subdivision consisted of 4.82 acres of land, which was zoned R8, it's at 2980 North Meridian The applicant is asking for a variance for the shop highlighted here. Technically in our code, and I can read that section of code to you, it's 11 2A 3D point three, one detached accessory building that does not exceed 120 square feet in area and eight feet or less in height shall be allowed in the required rear yard. In no case shall an accessory building be allowed in the street yard or the required side yard. In this case, because of the reconfiguration of the lot, this is now in the required street yard of the home. And they've got some definitions of what street yard means and you can go through those if you'd like to, but the UDC, there's also a section in the UDC that contains a definition of what's called a non-conforming structure. And the key to this is if a structure lawfully existed, the UDC would allow for it to remain, but the owner would have to provide evidence that a building permit was received for the building. The applicant would need to provide evidence to verify a valid building permit to construct the shed through Ada County. If council wants to prove the structure to remain, that may be an avenue that we can take to make findings for approval. Have not indicated that to the applicant beyond the staff report, so he may be able to provide something, we can, we can address that. So as I said, the applicant is requesting a variance to UDC Section 11 2A 3D 3, which prohibits accessory structures from encroaching into the street yard. And when this property was annexed, the existing structures were called out as non-conforming until such time as future subdivision application was approved. The recorded development agreement also requires that any existing structure remaining as part of the subdivision comply with the R8 dimensional standards. The narrative from the applicant gives some justification for the request, including the fact that the existing shed, that it is 258 feet from Meridian Road and 118 feet from the future proposed Addison Street and will be completely screened from view by fencing and landscaping. As noted previously, the subject property was approved for a preliminary plat in 2017. Prior to the submittal, staff indicated to the applicant that a variance would be required in order to keep the accessory building in its current location. During the public hearing of the preliminary plat, council made a motion that the applicant submit a variance application to take the applicant's request to keep the existing structure. There are certain criteria that need to be met, what's called hardship, in order for findings of approval for a variance to be, to be made. And they're listed here, a variance shall not grant a right or special privilege that is not otherwise allowed in the district. Variance relieves an undue hardship because of characteristics of the site. Three, the variance shall not be detrimental to the public health, safety and welfare. While staff is of the opinion that granting the proposed variance would not be detrimental to the public health, safety and welfare, staff finds granting the variance would grant a right or special privilege to the applicant that is not otherwise allowed. Specifically, the development agreement requires conformance with the R8 dimensional standards and the UDC does not allow detached accessory structures in the street yard. Further, staff finds there are no characteristics of the site that would prevent compliance with the subject UDC requirements. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the subject variance request. There are no outstanding issues for council and did not receive any written testimony on this and I will, as I said, there's some exhibits here. We have something in our code, a handout actually, that we give the folks to, that will kind of define what typical side yard, typical street yard and typical rear yard looks like and how that's defined, so I wanted to show you that here as well. I'll stand for any questions you have.
Thank you, Josh. Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Low Roberts.
So Josh, am I understanding this right, that everything was in place and then they put the shop in knowing they'd probably need a variance or the shop was there and then everything else happened?
Sure, so let me go back to the Madam Mayor, Council and Little Roberts. So one more slide. So this, this, prior to the preliminary plat being approved, this was all one lot and it had been that way in the county and there was a provision in the development agreement that upon further subdivision of this, that would be something that needed to be corrected. So it was brought up previously and then with the preliminary plat that we just went through, there was some discussion at council as to how, how this would work and what they would need to do in order to make this something that would be legal and so that's where we are here today with a, with a variance.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Madam Mayor. So that, that development agreement was at the same time as the annexation request? Yeah, okay.
Okay, so the applicant here this evening? Good evening, if you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Matt Schultz, 8421 South Ten Mile. I'm here on behalf of Thayer Pond. Thayer Pond was, and before my time, it was five years ago, 2013, January 22nd, so five years ago, 2013, they, they had approved for a annexation and a rezone to R8 for, I believe about seven acres. The north two, they, I guess they split it or there was a parcel they could create. They put some, I don't know if they're adult care facilities or single story, there's two of them there right on Meridian Road and right behind it on that two acre parcel north of us, there's a very large barn, which you can see in the picture, that has a flag in front of it on the left, looking at that picture. So that barn is actually on the, the north piece of property, still owned by Mr. Pond and they, they want to live in the White House. And the shop, I don't know the history, but I talked to some guys that know, this used to be a really big horse, pretty high end horse ranch back in the day in the seventies. Who knew? Who knew? I didn't know. But I suspect the shop was from that era, you know, seventies, eighties, I'm not sure. So what you have is on these two parcels, which used to be one parcel, you have the house furthest back, then you have this shop that straddled in the frontage of that house, about 20 feet in front, 20 feet in back, so it's kind of straddled on it. Then you've got this barn sitting on a separate parcel, then you've got these two adult care facility houses, if you will, on Meridian Road, so it kind of staggered forward to back. My client, Berkeley Building Company, purchased recently and we ran a preliminary plat through last month, seems like it was months ago, but I guess it was last month, for, for 19 or it was actually 20 lots around, around the existing house, maintaining the access to, we're going to put a road on top of this road you're looking at. Where I took this picture was from where the road, our new road turns and you're looking back to the private driveway they're going to maintain. So what you see there, that driveway is going to be maintained, it's going to stay as it is, but we're going to put a new road on top of this, of the hundred and something feet from there back to Meridian Road, full public right of way of the curve and they'll have a driveway access to it, to this as well as the adult care facilities at that turn. That preliminary plat was, or excuse me, that final plat was on your consent agenda tonight. We actually came in with 19 lots, we lost one lot, made them a little bit bigger, but that was on your consent agenda tonight and we're moving forward with construction. We didn't really know the background and the history on this. I'm claiming a little bit of ignorance on the fact that it was in the development agreement that we needed to rectify and I guess tear it down or, I mean, is that the solution, tear it down? You know, or what else are you going to do? Move it back 20 feet? There's another little detached pool, there's another little detached garage behind this one too, so we can't really move it back. So as I stated at the preliminary plat hearing, we were, we were in the misunderstanding, we could ask for a waiver. It was brought to our attention right as the motion was going to be made. Wait, 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 you got to ask for a variance, right? Okay, you know, so here we are, went back to the neighborhood meeting, nobody showed up to, you know, the public notices, the fee, the $1,500 fee, whatever for the variance. Here we are asking for a variance, which I know there's a high standard for variances, but I can count on one hand over the last 20 years how many variances I've asked for and I've gotten them, but it's a little bit of a stretch sometimes, but it's a very unique situation in that you don't create three quarter acre lots in a city typically. You don't create with flag lots and driveways on, you know, seventies structures. This is a very unique circumstance with the geometry and such that gives us a situation... unique circumstance with the geometry and such, that gives us a situation where it feels a hardship to tear down the shop. It's something that the ponds use, they'd like to keep. We don't think it's a nuisance. Technically, who knew? You know, I would never ask for accessory structure in front of a house that was new, but since this is existing, and it's a very unique lot, we're asking for the variance. And I'm here on behalf of Thayer Pond. They don't want to tear it down. You know, we don't want to, it's not really Berkeley's fight, but I said, hey, I'll go ask for the variance, Mr. Pond, you know, since you want to live there and keep the shop. And so I'm here on his behalf to ask for that variance. And hopefully, and I don't know about finding records for a building permit in the 70s in Ada County. I think the chances on that might be slim to none. I'm guessing. You probably can't find one from five years ago in Ada County, or maybe 10. You know, their records don't go 30 years back. I just, I can almost guarantee it. So, with that said, I'm hoping you grant the variance, and that we don't have to approve the building permit for it. It's a nice steel painted that matches the architectural of the house. It's not a big eyesore. And if you come in, and if you look at the color, if you look at the color rendering that I gave you, the exhibit, if you come in on the right side of that road, like your entry traffic will, on the south side of Addison there, you can see, we'll be looking at a landscaping and a fence, you know, and the view that would catch that would be actually in the exit, the exit view. So it's not really a visual insult, if you will, to the, it is definitely way back there. It's over 100 feet back from our new road. And it straddles the front of the house. So, we leave it up to you. We're at your mercy. We ask for the variance and not tear it down, and leave it as it is. So with that, we'll stand for your approval. Thanks.
Matt, does Thayer Pond live there? I didn't think he did.
He does. He's staying there. He lives there. We're talking about what kind of fence to put around him. Him and his wife live there. He definitely lives there. Unless he moved out just in the last couple of weeks. But the last I checked, he was living there. Yeah, we're building the roads around him here pretty soon, and he was, told us he was going to stay. Now, if that's changed, I'm not in the know, but that's what I understood.
Counsel, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to provide testimony on this? Our only two in the audience. Earning a merit badge, perhaps? Very good. Okay, counsel?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
So I'm wondering if a variance could be granted for a specific amount of time, or just while Mr. Pond is using this residence that could go away if the property changes hands? Is that staff or legal?
Josh or Bill?
Yeah, I'm kind of aware of a way that it can be a temporary variance. Once a variance is granted, it's there, it's placed on the property, unless there's some, Mr. Nary has another way he can think of where it's a temporary deal. I've never seen that, something that's possible. It's always, once you're granted that, that's your right now. You've got a different setback.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, yeah, there isn't a temporary of that nature. And it is in the development agreement, so it's a requirement that existed for, since 2012. So, there really isn't an alternative. And again, I think the staff findings are correct. I mean, you have to make those findings to be able to allow variance. At least their opinion is it doesn't meet those requirements.
So, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Make sure I'm understanding this correctly. We cannot approve this variance unless applicant can give us a reason showing undue hardship, or something of that nature?
The unique characteristics of the site, based on the dimensions of the site, usually that's a topography issue predominantly, but that's the one of the prongs. You need all of them. And the other is, again, the hardship, and the hardship can't be caused by the property. So it has to be a hardship that exists from other reasons that are beyond their doings.
Mr. Borton.
Question for Mr. Nary. On the variance requirement of relieving an undue hardship, might there be an undue hardship and characteristic of the site created by the plat we approved? Necessitating access as depicted here? We created a hardship that might not have otherwise existed?
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, Councilman Borton, wasn't that anticipated when they annexed the property and agreed to that in the development agreement? And that was not unexpected?
Just walking through this, if in 2012 it was annexed with the DA but no plat, the DA contemplated complying with all of the R8 standards, and then subsequent to that, we approve a plat, which didn't have to be designed as it is here, yet it was, we approved it, was it at that point that we created an undue hardship on this site by necessitating access as depicted?
Well, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, Councilman Borton, I mean, I guess my position would be is that hardship was then was created by the applicant. They chose to subdivide the site. They chose the design of the subdivision. All of that was their choice, on whether to subdivide and how to do it. Wasn't something the city imposed upon them. It was something they chose to do.
Mr. Burnt.
I didn't mean to interrupt. Councilman Borton, do you have any further questions? Okay. Are we concerned about setting a precedence in regard to maybe future, you know, land use owners or applicants who may want to do something similar, and use this as an example of, hey, you did it for him, why can't we do it for us, type of a thing? Is that a concern?
Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, Councilman Borton, yes, that is the primary concern, is the state code is very specific on what is required for a variance to be granted. And it is totally within your discretion to make that finding, whether you think it meets those requirements. The concern always is, is that other applicants will have the same opportunity. That's why that one provision about granting a special right that is not allowed to anybody else is one of the prongs you have to find, is because then other people could say, they would then like to do something similar, whether it's in that same location or a different part of the city. And there would be a difficulty in making various findings that are different, and the circumstances are similar.
Any other questions from counsel, for staff, or the applicant? Any final, oh, well, our gentleman in the back would like to provide testimony. You'll need to come.
Yeah.
That's the trade-off.
So, could you state my name?
You'll state your name and address?
So, Mark Knight, and 9504 Bean Apple Drive in Boise, Idaho.
Thank you.
I guess I was just curious. So, Mr. Pond was the owner of the land, all of the land before?
Yes.
And then he decided, he agreed to subdivide it, sell off part of it and subdivide it. Was it like, do we know for sure? It was clear to him when that was agreed upon, that that shop had to be removed?
Yes, I think it was part of the discussion.
I mean, was it just kind of in the paperwork, or did he know that for sure? Do you know? I don't know.
Better get him on the phone.
It just seems, I don't know, seems like, if he already knew that and agreed upon it, then, then to make a variance after you're already allowed to be subdivided, I can see why you might not want to let him have the variance later. But if it was unclear to him, and at this point, he's being told he has to take it down, then that seems unfair.
Thank you. I appreciate your comments. Always appreciate help. I guess we would ask Matt if he did his job as a land developer to explain all of those things.
Thank you, Mayor. And I swear I didn't pay that guy. I don't know. But he did introduce a good point. And from my understanding, it said meet all code requirements of R8. It went way over Thayer Pond's head, and whatever he was doing at the time, which is the adult care facilities. I think it was in the future he might do a subdivision. He didn't think through the, and to be honest with you, I didn't even know when we submitted this, that this was going to come up until staff caught on the review. So I, you know, I don't have Thayer Pond here to testify, which I did, you know, to put it on the record that he didn't know. But it's my assumption from my discussions with him, that he would just be devastated. I mean, it wasn't, hey, we're going to try to get this around him and get a variance after the fact, or anything like that. So here's my interpretation on something that was discussed with Mr. Nary about the granting a rider a special privilege that is not otherwise allowed in the district. The fact that staff says, oh, we, it would grant a rider a privilege, and I know that's the high bar we need to meet. And the way I interpret that, and I'm no attorney, is that, is there another way to, like, another zone request, or another way to get it, that doesn't open up a precedent for somebody to come in later and say, oh, look what you let them do, a three-quarter acre lot with a shop halfway in front of a house, you know, 150 feet back of a curved road? You know, it's just not going to establish a precedent. So, I may be erroneous, but that's my interpretation. It's a very low bar. I'm not an attorney. I just, I just kind of seen a few of these over the years. I've done a few of them over the years. And I think, hopefully, you will grant this. And I understand, because of the technicalities, why you might not. But we hope that you can find the technicality and find the finding that it doesn't grant a special rider privilege. And I'll just leave it at that, and we'll see how it goes. Thanks.
Josh or Caleb, anything you needed to add?
Looking for, just, so that you're aware, we're trying to remember, and I'm looking up a staff report, directly across the street on the west side of Meridian Road, there's Madden Village subdivision that was approved last year as well, with a similar situation. And we're trying to see what we did, so that we can make sure we're consistent with. I'm looking for that as we speak.
I know.
Yeah, and there wasn't a variance applied for that we can recall on that, Madam Mayor? I don't believe so.
Madam Mayor, Madam Members of the Council, I mean, so I'm looking at the development agreement that Mr. Pond did sign in 2012. So, I have to presume he read it, and so he did know the conditions. The only thing I can think of, if the council wants to grant a limited use, is, again, part of the conditions of this development agreement are to comply with our code at a certain point in time. So, my only concern, whenever we make special conditions to allow somebody to do something for a certain period of time, is someone has to keep track of the period of time. And then we have the same discussion in five years, and I don't really want to tear the building down. So, I mean, in looking at this development agreement, I mean, it's certainly within the council's purview. That's not in front of you tonight, so you can't grant an amendment to the development agreement. That's certainly an option they could have considered. But, again, it's always problematic. That's the only thing I can think of, is that the development agreement gives these requirements at certain points in time of when things need to be removed. The language, as Josh has stated, in the development, or in the staff report, is in this development agreement, about removing structures and complying with the requirements. But the concern is, is, again, you're only kicking the can down the road to somebody else. That five years, or 10 years, or whatever date you want to set, someone's going to come in and say, I don't want to tear it down, no matter what you do. So I tried to look for something.
Okay. Matt?
Thanks, Mayor Matt Schultz, again. Thanks, Mr. Nary. I forgot to mention it last time I was up here. There is an option, and I thought of it a couple iterations ago, about maybe opening up an amended development agreement, potentially, which I think he just alluded to. Potentially, but we've already got a variance in front of us, so I don't know if it's conditional upon granting a revised DA. I don't know. It's a little convoluted. But I think it speaks to, you know, untying some hands. You know, it hangs on the DA, apparently, is what we're saying. It's all hanging on the DA that says he needs to meet all the conditions of code. So ideally, this would have been addressed before the DA was done, or concurrent with the DA five years ago. It wasn't. I'd be happy to take it back through revised DA. Hopefully, waive the fee, because we already paid 1,200 bucks for the variance, but, or whatever it was. But we're going to be on this site for a while. We're going to be building it through the summer, the spring/summer, and I'd be happy to do it for Mr. Pond, if that's a route that you think you need to go. I'm just throwing that out there. So, thanks.
Thank you.
If you're lost, we're all lost.
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Regardless of what's in the DA, the requirement to comply with, in this case, the R8 standard still exists, does it not?
Yes, Madam Members of the Council, Councilman Borton. So, what I'm looking at is, what Josh cited in the staff report, is that one condition in this development agreement says, "Any future subdivision shall be designed in a manner that the existing structures on the site comply with the R8 dimensional standards." So that's what he was talking about. So what I'm saying is, is, could the council consider amending that one condition and creating an additional condition? I think you can. I don't think it changes the conversation, it just pushes it to another point in time. Whether or not any future subdivision could have been drafted at the time, saying, "One property can remain for a period of time," or whatever you want to allow, as a condition of annexation, which is what the development here was done at, could have been considered or discussed at the time. I don't know, I don't recall this one, so I don't recall if that was a conversation at all. But it is clear, from what the staff has presented, that based on the fact that they chose to then resubdivide the property to do this new pond subdivision, that does enact this provision that requires that all of it has to comply with the R8.
And since it was in the DA, this topic has come up before. Is it possible to continue this to our next meeting, to look into what was presented during that application, and if some of those consequences were clear, to consider that condition in the DA?
Madam Mayor, Members of Council, yes, absolutely, we can do that. Again, if the decision at that point in time is to consider amendment to the development agreement, then that's a different process they will have to go through. You can't grant it as part of this. But yes, we can continue it to get more information, so that you at least have more information to make this decision. We can certainly do that.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton.
You still have to make the variance findings?
Yes.
I mean, you still, you're stuck with that, aren't you?
Well, Madam Members of the Council, yeah, I, you know, lawyers can always have two different opinions. I would agree, you could argue that, yes, you still have to make a variance finding. You could also argue that if this condition had said, even at a future subdivision, "One property can remain for this period of time, for whatever you want it," I think you could make that, you might be able to make that finding. But I, without knowing what the conversation was, whether it was discussed, even if it wasn't discussed, I'm not saying that that's fail-safe. But you're right. I mean, it's certainly arguable that you are still granting a special right, a variance is still necessary. You may not answer your question.
You didn't. That's good, though.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
So, it seems, though, from what Bill is saying, that if we do amend the DA, we can then put a time limit on this structure, allowing it for, to remain for a certain amount of years. That's what it sounded like. It's already a 40-year-old shop, so maybe forever isn't the best idea either. But I am not real thrilled with the idea of just making Mr. Pond tear it down right now, either.
And again, I think the challenge is going back and tearing down something after the fact is next to impossible. Could this have been avoided in a different plat design?
I think there's, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council, I believe there's, if you look at the diagram here, the way that our code is set up is whatever the front of the house or the street yard is, you can't have a shop further than this plane about right here, okay? If access to this home were to take off of, I don't see the name of this street, but if it came south, then we could make the argument that that is then the street yard. And then this shop would then be in the rear of the property. And I think we could make that finding. Again, some of it is dependent on the design. Some of this is how the applicant wanted to design their home. This is where their access to their driveway and to their business is. I think there's opportunity there definitely to do something different that would have made this work.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
If it's a continuance to February 6th to at least keep this thing alive while legal and planning noodles some possible solutions, if there's a couple weeks. Well, a couple things that I struggle with the variance finding. I don't, I don't know how you get through the undue hardship with, because of characteristics of the site. And Matt, I think you see that as well. It's just a tough one to find. I'm really, one, holding true to variances. If they don't comply, we gotta, we gotta make the findings. And if we can't, we can't. And the idea of modifying a DA to backdoor a variance request, even with good intentions, is a really slippery slope. That kind of spooks me a little bit in a big way. So, I'm not opposed to continuing for two weeks, but I, I don't know if it gets, at least from my perspective, if it gets, gets us anywhere. I don't think I can make that finding. The two bits.
Further discussion?
The, Madam Mayor, the options, it sounds like, are, maybe we'll need to deny the request or continue it. If council has a preference on two weeks or just take action today.
I probably would move to.
Mr. Burnt.
Oh, sorry. I'm so sorry. Madam Mayor, I'm, that's pretty funny. I apologize. It was a major mistake on my part.
But you're entitled. You're still the new guy.
I know. Bad mistake.
I'd say it's your one chance.
Bad form. Knock that off. My apologies. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
I probably would move to continue this, give Matt two weeks to pull a rabbit out of his hat, figure out maybe how he can do this. That would, that would be something that I would be in favor for.
I'm good with that.
Ms. Mylum, was that kind of an attempt to say, I second the motion?
Second?
Am I rubbing off on you? I apologize.
I'm just following you.
Further discussion? No?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
If the council wants to continue this for two weeks, I'm fine with that. I just think that it's, to the applicant, I echo Councilmember Borton's comments. The threshold for me for granting a variance is very, very high and it's intended to be high. I hear the intent and see what you're trying to accomplish and I'm sympathetic to what you're trying to hopefully do. I just, I struggle with finding, the findings to be able to support granting a variance. But if the next two weeks, if there's an opportunity to, for us to maybe go back and review the minutes or watch the meeting and get a better understanding of maybe what the intent was of council at the time, if that somehow is not reflected, I'm willing to put in the time for that as well.
I have a motion and a second to continue this till February 6th. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 9B is a public hearing continued from January 16th and. What, Steph might be talk, oh, Caleb.
Hold on, presentation.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, as was just mentioned, this was continued from January 16th, although no presentation was given because it was after midnight at the time. We still have the exact same amount of people in the audience, though, I will point out. So we could have tackled this last week.
We could have done it.
But as is the case anyways, there are really two things associated with this item. There is an action item underneath my presentation, the Resolution 18-2057, which I would ask you to make a motion to approve after my brief presentation. There really are two things included in this request. One is to reflect the revised fees for home occupation accessory use tiers that we discussed over the previous several months and adding that to the citywide fee schedule. And then currently, in Meridian City Code 115A2, there's a table that has a line item labeled landscape plan review, but we don't have an associated fee with that, so we've never really been able to use that tool. So today, we, any developer that wants to change their landscape plan, whether it be for fencing or different types of amenities or those types of minor modifications, we charge them a $541 fee and we send them back to you for what we call a final plat modification. So if we add this landscape, landscape plan fee, we will be able to process those modifications at the staff level and process them administratively. So just to clarify, those would be changes to a landscape plan that weren't the subject of a public hearing. So if people are here and, you know, everyone liked the pool and they want to change a pool out for a tot lot, we would say, no, you got to go back through that process of a public hearing again. But if someone had, you know, vinyl fencing and now they want to do cedar fencing and it wasn't discussed by anybody, we could do that at the staff level. So just kind of an example of what we're talking about here. So that's really what the revised fee schedule is for on this topic. And I think with that brief presentation, I would stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Caleb. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
If there are no questions, I move we approve 9B, Resolution Number 18-2057.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. On the resolution?
Oh. It is a public hearing.
Sorry, Madam Members of the Council, yeah, it's a public hearing, so you need to close the public hearing. And then the ordinance, that's 11A, is what is the ordinance for the public hearing.
It's a resolution for it, then.
What's the resolution for then?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, so the ordinance, the resolution adopts the fees, the ordinance amends the code.
Okay.
I apologize.
Thank you.
Yeah, the resolution is for the fees.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Kavner.
Let's try this one more time. I move we close the public hearing on 9B.
I have a motion and a very quick second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
I move we approve item number 9B, Resolution Number 18-2057.
I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any discussion from council? Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavner?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes.
Aye.
10A is a department report. You'll notice, counsel, and we have new terminology in the description on this, net zero budgeting. Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
It's a net zero budget amendment request.
Madam Mayor, Members of the council, I'm here to request a budget amendment in the amount of $220,177 for the street lighting along the ACHD Pine Road Widening Project between Meridian and Locust Grove that's going on right now. This will result in a net zero cost to the city. So the streetlights will be installed under the ACHD construction project and then paid for by the city. ACHD will invoice the city. But then the city has an agreement with Meridian Development Corporation and MDC will be reimbursing the city for all of those costs. So we just need the spending authority to be able to spend this amount of money and then this amount of money will get reimbursed back to us by MDC. So with that, I'll stand for any question.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Seeing no questions, I move we approve 10A, Public Works Budget Amendment for a not-to-exceed amount of $220,177 for ACHD Project 815025.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 10A. Any discussion from council? Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavner?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes. Item 11A was just discussed. It's ordinance 18-1762. Mr. Clerk, will you please read this by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City of Meridian, ordinance number 18-1762, and ordinance amending Meridian City Code as codified at Title 11, entitled "The Unified Development Code of the Meridian City Code Pertaining to Definitions Allowed Uses in All Districts: Specific Use Standards, Home Occupation and Retail Store, Wine and Beer Sales and Servings, Surety Agreements, and Establishing New Definitions and Regulations to Allow the Operation of Food and Beverage Products Processing Minor in the Commercial, Industrial, and Traditional Neighborhood Zoning Districts, and Providing for a Way of the Reading Rules and Providing an Effective Date."
Thank you. Counsel?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavner.
Move we approve ordinance number 18-1762 with suspension rules.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 11A. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavner?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All ayes must carry. Any items under item 12? Just reminders of the town hall meeting tomorrow evening from 6:30 to 8:00 at Coal Valley Christian and State of the City on February 7th at 429. It's a half hour later.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
For future meeting topics, just as a heads up, the workshop February 13 has Idaho Humane Society long-term erection discussion, a VRT presentation about Valid Connect 2.0. We're going to be discussing Councilwoman Mylum's comments and discussion about council elections and whether it's amended, our ordinance amended to have the top vote getters, I think, be the ones as opposed to run it for individual seats. So that's on for the workshop as well. And then each of us will have the opportunity to present our brief updates, if any, on those commissions that we participate on external. So just a heads up of workshop palooza for February.
All right. Thanks, Joe.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Caleb.
I know I'm not part of the council for future meeting topics, but I would like to piggyback on what Mr. Borton just brought up. There is a joint meeting just after the workshop meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission, so that does, it is going to be a long meeting. But it has to end somewhere around 5:30 or 6:00 because you have another party joining you for that meeting. So kind of looking at the clerk and limiting the topics of discussion. I also had a brief conversation with Councilman Kavner just before this meeting that VRT 2.0, Stephen Hunt with VRT will not be writing on the 13th to discuss that. He'd like to do that in March if at all possible, which may help you out a little bit. So. Just one more thing while I have the floor. I was planning on doing an all things transportation, but I can maybe put it on the agenda. If there's not time, we'll do it some other time if that's, that's okay. But anyways, I just want to also remind you of the joint meeting with planning and zoning mainly. Thank you.
Thank you, Caleb. With that, I'll move to item 13 with executive session and ask for a motion.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Move that we go into executive session pursuant to Idaho State Code 74-206, 1A, 1B, 1F, and 1J.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn into executive session. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavner?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.